Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 19, 2019. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Guskovia.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Wells.
Thank you. First item on our agenda then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. First item then is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Motion by Johnson, second by Demmer to approve the meeting minutes for March 5, 2019. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and those minutes are approved. We have two items on our consent agenda. The first one is to accept the 2018 Community Development Annual Report. And I must say, I'm actually disappointed this is on the consent agenda, because I'd love to spend a little time talking about it. It was an amazing job. You and your team did a wonderful job putting it together. It was a very impressive year, and kudos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it.
The report is prepared annually and summarizes the various activities in the Community Development Department, including planning, housing programs, property maintenance, economic and redevelopment, and building inspections. Separate reports are also attached, which highlight the work of the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. And there was a great deal of work accomplished in 2018, and we appreciate that you are looking forward to new opportunities in 2019. So with that, and I would really encourage everyone, so will this, this will be on the Community Development Department's link on the Facebook page as well?
It'll be on the webpage.
Website.
It will be on the webpage, yes, on the website.
Okay, so they don't have to go through our agendas, they can find it on your webpage.
They should be able to find it.
Definitely, definitely worth looking at. So with that, with this action, we'll be accepting the 2018 Community Development Annual Report. And then, the next item on our consent agenda is, it's an informational item, the corporate officer change for Triple Shift Entertainment LLC, Doing Business as Classic Bowl. City Code Section 5-216 Sub 6 requires that the city council be notified of any change in legal ownership or beneficial interest of a license holder. So this notification is from Classic Bowl, indicating that the following corporate officers and board of managers have been added, and this, again, this is just for informational purposes. So that is the consent agenda.
Your honor.
Councilmember Kicker.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Demmer. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that is adopted. Item four, there's actually a public hearing with this one, conduct a public hearing for vacation of street and utility easement and adopt Resolution 19-38, Foley Boulevard and 101st Avenue. On February 9, council adopted Resolution 19-34 to consider the vacation of street and utility easement and order a public hearing for Foley Boulevard and 101st Avenue. Vacation is being considered to accommodate the construction of the self-storage building. The building will be located within the portion of the easement that is to be vacated. A new drainage and utility easement will be created as a separate document, and the new easement will be brought to the city council for acceptance at a future date. On February 19, council adopted Resolution Number 19-34 to consider vacation of the street and utility easement. All utilities have been notified, and there are no objections. The process for vacating and easement under the city's charter requires a public hearing and passage of a resolution. Does council need any other information before we open the public hearing on this? Mr. Brody, any concern there? Your relaxed look and your look of concern are really similar, so.
(laughter)
All right, well, then with that. With that, we'll open the public hearing for vacation of the street and utility easement, Foley Boulevard and 101st Avenue. Is anybody here to address council for the public hearing on the street and utility easement vacation? Anyone here for the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And...
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 19-38 to consider the vacation of a street and utility easement for Foley Boulevard and 101st Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. Item five, consider Resolution Number 18-10 Sub 9, awarding a contract for Lyons Coon Creek Park and approve the direct purchases and construction administration contract. Mr. Hammer, you want to kind of give us a reader's digest on this one, or take as much time as you want, we have a short meeting anyway.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. We opened bids last week for the site improvements on this project. We would be recommending award to custom builders, which includes both alternates for the job. One is an alternate as a deduct if the city supplies the Class 5 material, which we believe we'll be able to supply at least a portion, if not all of that. The second option is, or alternate is to provide access down to the creek. That's within the existing parking lot today, give some stepping stones, some benches, the ability to get down to the creek. So I would recommend approval of the entire contract with the alternates in the amount of $1,162,958.20. Also with this, there were several direct purchases, one of which is the site lighting by Canexus Energy. They'll own and maintain that, and that price is $24,623. We also previously purchased or received direction to move forward with the playground equipment, and that totals $488,152. We also received two quotes for construction management on the building rehabilitation, one from Amcon Construction and one from Kinghorn, and I am recommending award to Kinghorn in the amount of $80,548.44. And finally, we have a construction administration contract with WSB, material testing, surveying, and specialty inspections and structural review, and that amount is $77,423. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have or speak more about the park, but I believe the email I provided to you at the end of last week and some updates to the memo here, that should cover all the expenditures and the budget for the project.
Thank you. Question, Mr. Hammer.
Mayor.
Councilmember Guskovia. I remember we talked about updating and doing something with creek access, and it's mentioned in here, but can you go into any detail on what you have envisioned on that?
Councilmember Guskovia, council, if you look at the site plan as the attachment, and you look down in the southwest corner, there's an existing parking lot there today. We're building the new parking lot on the north side of the creek. So there is a shelter for the restrooms that will be built in that location, as well as kind of a path down to the creek, along with some stepping stones and boulders that will put you right, right there and create a gap, and some park benches that then can look over and into the park.
Okay, and is there, is there anything going on? Is the, is the watershed district doing anything with that part of Coon Creek as part of this, or with what they're doing a little bit further west?
No, Councilmember Guskovia, there's nothing planned with the watershed district as part of this improvement. We're doing some rainwater gardens as part of this and 119th culvert to help with some of the upstream issues on Tronsen Creek, but those are being done by the city and not in coordination with the watershed district.
All right, thank you. That's a really interesting concept. If Coon Creek, Coon Creek watershed would in the future think about doing some little educational things along that creek or something, just for, either for kids or for adults or for something, it seems like a good spot for it there.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I've got a different thing that we looked at as part of this, some flood mitigation in this area, which could create maybe a small lake, some different access, but it was cost prohibitive at this time, so I'll be working with the watershed. Maybe there's some grant opportunities or a future date, we can come back and talk about, in addition to the project. This is really the park on the north side of the creek. What I'm envisioning is something more to the south and west, that you can maybe split those uses and have more of a playing space, as well as maybe access to the creek on the opposite side.
Excellent, all right, thank you. All right, anybody want to take a run at the...
I'll go for it.
Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion, lots of them. First, adopt Resolution 18-10 Sub 9, awarding the contract for the site improvements at Lyons Coon Creek Park. Authorize staff to issue purchase orders to Northland Recreation for the direct purchase of playground equipment and surfacing materials, and that is a total of $488,152 between those. Approve outdoor lighting, new construction quote and energy, energy and maintenance agreement provided by Canexus Energy in the amount of $24,623. Approve a construction management contract with Amcon Kinghorn in the amount of $80,548.44.
That's just Kinghorn Construction.
Oh, Kinghorn Construction, sorry. And authorize the staff to execute construction administration and materials testing contracts with WSB and associates, and the total for that is $77,423.
I'll second that.
Motion by Geisler, which was impressive, good job.
Very well done.
Second, second by Johnson.
Not quite as impressive.
Oh, no! It was an impressive second, it was just a very, it was a good motion. Any discussion on that? I am so impressed with the people that we've had working on our, the contractors that we've had for the last several years, and I have to tell you, I toured Riverwind, and the work that Kinghorn did over there was tremendous. And it's so great to have a hometown company that just has such a heart for the city and will do that kind of work for the, the fair price we're giving them.
Absolutely.
Yep, yep, very happy, so. We're very excited to see what Lyons Creek is, Creek Park is going to look like. All right, I'm sorry, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. And we are on to item six, to consider the 2019-2020 Police Officer Labor Agreement and adopt Resolution 19-37, approving the labor agreement. Anything you want to hit on this, Mr. Stemmott?
Sure, Mayor, council. You know, as we do with any of our labor agreement process, we do pretty extensive research on what the market comparables out there are for like positions in similar cities, and certainly that was the case again this year with our police union. You know, a couple of things that stand out in this contract that I did just want to point out that are a little bit unusual, but I think are pretty easily explained. In particular with the wages, you see that we're a little more aggressive at the starting wage through year two, and really the purpose behind that is, as we did our research, certainly the union brought it to our attention as well, but was verified through our research, that our starting wages were, you know, significantly below some of the market averages that we are seeing. And so, one, made sense to take, to take a look at that, and I think the chief would agree with me that it's been a little bit more of a challenge from a recruiting standpoint. We've had some candidates that have been weighing, you know, offers from, from different cities as you're trying to get that best candidate from your pool, and have selected other cities or counties or what have you based on that. And so, it's a very competitive market for police officers right now, and some of that is reflected in this new contract, certainly with the wages. But I would continue that even into, as we looked at the sick leave structure, there was some modification to that to line up with shifts, which actually puts it in line with some of our other union agreements as well, as some of our training. We have made some changes there, just to sort of take into effect some of the more difficult schedules that police officers have, and in those instances, which isn't always where we have to call them in for training, sort of right after a shift outside their normal shift, they've been working all day, they come in to recognize some of that as more of a burden than we would typically place on people. A couple of the other things are more administrative, we've added some language on specialty pays, both in the case of drug task force officer and canine officers. In both cases, that was already the pre-existing practice, and we're just reflecting it in contract to make sure that there was no question about that, but in both cases have been there for quite a while. Beyond that, the COLA increase, other than what I had mentioned before, for 2019 and 20 does match both our non-represented employees and our public works and fire contracts that have been settled now. And with this, assuming council does approve this tonight, we will have just one more contract outstanding for 2019, that'll be the police sergeants. They usually have to wait till this contract is done, because a lot of their language refers to things that happen in this contract, and I would anticipate at the first meeting in April that we'd have that before council.
All right, excellent. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Stemmott on the contract? Mr. Demmer, Councilmember Demmer?
Move to adopt Resolution 19-37, approving labor agreement and all M's OU between the city and law enforcement labor services, Local 207.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I just want to maybe take, did you and Ms. Bacon, our assistant, do a lot of the work on this as well, and recognize the hard work that both of you put in to making sure, and along with the police staff, to have a good contract and a good negotiation, to be able to say that it, from my perspective, seems like it's a very healthy relationship and a good conversation to get to something that is workable for both the city and the police staff, so I appreciate all the hard work.
Well, and it's, and it's concerning to hear that we might have good candidates going other places, because we weren't competitive in our wage, and that is not where we want to be.
Right.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Guskovia.
I looked over this, there's a lot here. I called our city manager, got some clarification on some things. Some of this is formalizing some current practices that we have right now. One of the questions that I had, and I got a good answer on it, is the, on the sick leave, as that, you know, as that accrues over time, you know, we're a pretty generous sick leave, and we've seen other municipalities where folks will retire with just a whole bunch of sick leave, and there's this huge liability for the city. My concern was, is there a max on the accrued sick leave?
A cap.
A cap, right, and there is, Matt assured me on that, and there also is a max in our current language too on vacation pay. So whenever, I don't think we're going to be in a position like we've seen with other municipalities, where we have a huge liability when someone retires. So, just wanted to thank staff for explaining that to me and making, reassuring me on those points.
All right, excellent. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We are on to item seven, consider appeal of a massage therapist license denial. Who would like to...
Hi, Mayor, council. The address for you tonight is a request to hear from the applicant, Ms. Candorian Bay, who applied for and was denied a massage therapist license due to past criminal convictions. Ms. Bay is here to take testimony.
Okay.
Ms. Bay, do you want to come up?
Okay. Go ahead and please take the podium there. State your name.
Candorian Bay. So, I did get denied, and when I got the notification, one thing that stood out to me, that the, I don't, I believe her name was Ms. Stephanie, not really sure, but she said that I don't have a good moral character for my past, and that's my past, it's not who I am now. I graduated from high school, I graduated from college with honors, with a 3.8 GPA average. I have two kids that, that needs me, and massage is what I love to do, and I would really love if you guys can really take into consideration of reconsidering the decision.
Okay. All right, thank you. Does anybody have any questions of her?
I...
Councilmember Johnson.
So can you tell the council, after you were charged, did you plead guilty to the offense that was charged, through a plea negotiation?
It was a plea deal.
Okay.
And basically with the, the last charge that I got charged with, I had to turn in the person who had orchestrated everything.
So you were charged with aiding and abetting?
No.
Okay.
No, it was credit card fraud.
Okay.
And basically, I went down to the police and told them what all happened, I was even threatened, and at the time, I was even pregnant with my son, and the guy had told me, like, if I don't do what he says, he's going to kill me and my unborn child, and I'm like, I can't have that, and doctors had told me that I would never have kids. So for him to say that, I'm like, I need to protect my unborn child and myself, so I put everything into consideration and told the officers what had happened, and the things that I was involved with, which I'm not proud of, but that's not who I am anymore.
Okay, so there were the, there was the gross misdemeanor conviction, which was check forgery, right?
Yes.
And then there were two misdemeanor convictions for theft, right?
Yes.
Were those all related?
No.
Because they were all in the same year?
No.
Okay, so they were separate things?
And I was with other people that were trying to steal, so they didn't get caught, but I did, and since they didn't get caught, they had charged me since I was with them.
Did you cooperate with the police on any of the investigations or prosecutions of other people?
Yes.
Okay, and then, tell the council what your sentence was like, what did you, what was the consequence that you had to do, and how long were you on probation?
Probation, I was on for two years, and that was unsupervised, but I did have to do cognitive classes. The first one, I wasn't able to make it because of transportation, and once that didn't go well, they had violated me, and I did, probably a few days, but they had got it, it was counted for, so then once, although days was counted for, I did have to restart the whole cognitive class over again.
Okay, so that the rest of the council understands, the cognitive class you're referring to is a cognitive skills class that kind of teaches you some lessons about how to deal with issues and problems in life and things like that.
Yes.
It's a form of training, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, and did you successfully complete it?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and were you successfully discharged then from your probation after two years?
Yes.
Okay, so you're no longer on paper for any offense?
No, sir.
Okay. Do you have any felony level convictions?
No.
Just the gross misdemeanor, check forgery, and then a couple of misdemeanor thefts all around April through September of 2015?
Correct.
Did you do any time?
No.
Okay, so you're on unsupervised probation, so you didn't, they didn't feel you were in need of a probation officer to supervise you, right?
Correct, sir.
And you were not asked to do any jail time as a consequence for these, right?
Correct.
And you cooperated with the authorities as well?
Yes.
Those are all my questions, does anybody else have any others?
And were the, were these all disclosed on our application?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, yes, they were.
Okay.
Mayor.
Councilmember Guskovia.
To that point, I was going to ask Ms. Bay, I know that our application for a massage license does require to disclose all prior convictions, so I just wanted to confirm, you did in fact disclose these on your application?
Yes, I did.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So, Councilmember Johnson, so how does that timeline work out then? Because she graduated in June of 2017, so was she still finishing those things while she was in school then?
Graduated which component of it? Show me what you're pointing to.
So, and I was just in her graduating, adoptive lifestyle, graduating class of June 2017 from the National American University with a diploma in massage therapy.
Right.
So she's probably doing those things concurrently.
Yep, yep. She could, I mean, because she was on unsupervised probation, there's no prohibition for her to get an education, do any other training. In fact, it's encouraged as part of rehabilitation to get back to a position where you can be fully reintegrated into society, and it looks like she did all the things that were expected of her.
So the...
And did some of them simultaneously.
And it would be, it's almost without a break of some sort, she's not employable as a massage therapist if it requires a license.
She was taking a big risk.
Yeah.
Yep. Which is, once we get into the deliberation on this appeal, I'm going to share some thoughts with the council on that.
I have a quick timeline question too.
Councilmember Demmer.
When did the probation finish? Like, is that this year, last year?
When was she off of paper?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so when did you formally finish up your unsupervised probation? When were you discharged successfully?
I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
But...
Because there's, just, the reason, the reason she wouldn't be sure, and maybe Mr. Brody has an answer to that or can help is...
Make sure we have an accurate record. She was discharged from probation, I'm looking only at the gross misdemeanor, looking at public, the public record.
Thank you.
In, I'm sorry, I just lost it here, May of 2017.
Okay.
Just also to clarify one point, I'm not sure it's super relevant, but she actually was on supervised probation. I look at that two different ways. Number one, she actually was monitored, so she did have to go through those things because she's on supervised probation. As she indicated, she screwed up at one point, I don't think that was your exact word, but that's what I used. We call it a probation violation, that's noted, and she's reflected that.
Yeah.
And then had to go back and finish that cognitive skills class that she's mentioned. So just to make sure that she actually was on supervised probation versus unsupervised.
On the gross.
On the gross.
So probably unsupervised on the misdemeanors.
I can check on that, but I haven't...
Okay, would be usually consistent.
So the clarification, so roughly two years on probation, and then it's been roughly two years since that probation ended, give or take a month.
Give or take.
So, so we've been off and clear as long as you were on probation?
Yes.
Is, is this location, are there multiple therapists at that location?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So it'd be like one of several?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Guskovia.
Just kind of peed backing on stuff for you tonight, but I have the same question. So, with this application, would you be in the employ of Massage Envy or like an independent contractor just working there?
If I able to get the city license up, I'd be considered a licensed therapist with them, so I'll be a therapist through Massage Envy.
But I think what you're getting at is you'd be working under their supervision?
Correct.
Right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's fine. I have no further questions. Anybody else?
Anybody have any further questions, Ms. Bay?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. I almost think Councilmember Johnson's going to kick this one off.
If you're opening that up for discussion, what I would like to do is grant the appeal of Ms. Bay and authorize the issuance of a massage therapist license, and let me give you my reasons for, and my thought process for doing that. We encourage people who come into the criminal justice system to take responsibility for their actions. There's no evidence here that she didn't do that. I mean, she did take responsibility for her actions. She pled guilty, no evidence that she didn't do as she said, which is cooperate with other prosecutions. Sometimes it's difficult for people who enter into probation to... probation to follow the rules. It's a change in anybody's life and a lot is expected of them. She was fully forthcoming about her criminal record, which is not a felony criminal record. Um, she, um, disclosed it on her application. She talked to us here about it. Before even being asked about it, she admitted that she had a violation of probation. Um, she, uh, went through cognitive skills, um, worked and took quite a big risk to work to develop, um, a skill that is in some demand in, in our area, um, and to become somebody who would be a viable wage earning, tax paying member of our society. She's gotten her, her degree to do that. She's been, uh, engaged by a place and is asking for a license. She has gone for two years since being off paper approximately without any other known violations. Um, that is what we call, at least that is what I perceive and what I think we should call a successful person who has come through the criminal justice system and has attempted to fully reintegrate back into society. I take the issue, um, and we as lawyers ban tea this stuff around, um, especially prosecutors and defense attorneys a lot, when somebody has a, uh, we call it a crime of dishonesty, um, because it's check forgery or some kind of a low level fraud or something like that. And here it sounds like it was credit card related or, or whatever. And, uh, it puts her, um, in the zone of, um, I would venture to, an educated guess of tens of thousands, if not potentially even hundreds of thousands of people who have similar convictions in the state of Minnesota alone. But what distinguishes her is that she's worked to get herself off paper and with a degree and with a potential job. I would like to give her the opportunity to have a license to go to work and help provide for her family. So I'm going to move to, um, grant her appeal and ask that the city issue her a license and frankly, express my appreciation that she was so forthcoming about her criminal past.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Demmer?
I had a couple of questions, um.
That's a good time for him.
Yep, yep. So one thing I was trying to remember, and it was a couple of years ago, it was like my first year on council and we had somebody in a similar situation who was still on probation. I don't think it was exactly the same. It was some sort of license denial. They were on probation. We held it until the probation ended. They reapplied and then we granted. Again, different situation, but, but similar, we, we sort of let the criminal justice system decide when things had cleared. Um, you know, when I, when I first read the, the appeal and I, and I heard that I'm a totally changed person in four years, I thought to myself, okay, I'm not, not sure that, you know, because any four-year period in your life, you know, might not be enough to totally change. But I, I also, um, look at the steps that were taken, right? Going to school, getting, those are positive steps showing, showing real change. So I do, uh, agree. And I'll, I'll fully admit, I would expect Councilmember Johnson to take advice from me on engineering. I will take advice from him on law. The, the question I had about licensing in general is, uh, so, so let's say someone with a massage license, um, commits some sort of gross misdemeanor, ends up in the criminal justice system, um, and is on probation. So they've already got a license. Is the license revoked? Do we, do we have a method by which to do that? And, and the reason I ask is not because I'm saying that will happen here. I'm just curious if that, that would happen in, is there a vehicle by which to revoke someone's license if something goes wrong?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Demmer, we would have to be told that they had that conviction. We would have to hear about it in some way.
Okay. Okay. So I, but, but that would be the result. If we heard about it, if we heard that someone had committed something, we could revoke it at that point.
Yeah. We could talk to legal about that, but yeah, that would be my intent is to look into the situation and see if that needed to happen.
Yeah. And, and I think that that makes sense to me, right? So if, if there's a crime that's fresh and it's on paper, that, that we would then say, um, that's a reason for, for revocation. But I, I do agree that if we're gonna have a criminal justice system that says you're clear, we have to at some point accept that. And, and I, I actually really like the fact that it's roughly as long off probation as on, that, that seems to me to be a, a place where we can say, I think you're clear. You know, if it's the day after probation ends, I still think we have to consider it. And I think we have in the past. But to, to double that time, I'm, I'm fairly comfortable. And especially knowing that if something did go wrong and, and we've heard how much we love massage and we're gonna be a good role model and we're a changed person, and then knowing that there's a vehicle to take that away if things go badly, I'm about as confident here as I would be in a lot of other cases that things won't go badly. But this is really the weird part of this job.
It is.
Because we have to make these decisions in like a 10-minute period.
It's, and it's, and it really is a decision we get to make because it's not like the rental licensing where often it comes and we're really bound by, you know, some other state statute. This, we're not bound by any of that, correct? It's just a matter of whether we think it's wise or not. Okay.
Mayor?
Councilmember Griszkowicz?
Question for our legal staff. Is a licensure, is that, is it totally all municipal licensing? There is no state licensing for massage therapist?
Joan answered that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Griszkowicz, that is correct. The state of Minnesota does not license and regulate the massage therapist, which is why we've got quite a robust code to do so.
Right. And what is the term of our licensure? Is it permanent? Is it renewable every three years? Or how does, what's the term?
Councilmember Griszkowicz, it is a one-year license.
Okay.
And it renews automatically unless we get a report that something is going on and then we would do a further review. So they, they apply and for a renewal and we just run them through the process.
Okay.
There's not a second background.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I will concur and say that I appreciate, um, Councilmember Johnson's perspective. And for me, um, having, knowing that the criminal justice system can necessarily be a bit biased at times and flawed at times and great at times and all of that, that as we have people who go through and are successful, that I would ask any one of us if we ever done anything stupid in our past, that we may or may not have gotten caught for it, right? And that being able to say, I've, I admit it, I've done, I've made my restitution, I have done all that's been asked of me, I've been good. We have to move on. We've gotta help people move forward with their lives. And so I think the right thing to do is to grant the appeal.
Okay. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to grant the appeal of Candorian Bay and authorize issuance of a massage therapist license. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that motion carries.
Ms. Baye was unanimous. You're getting a license.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go and go and make good.
Good luck.
Yeah. Do well.
Your honor, if I may just say one, one other word about this. Um, I, I hope that people watching out there understand that this council really cares about the people that come before it. Um, what, what just happened here, uh, was that this council expressed a lot of faith in Ms. Baye to encourage her to go off and, and set that past behind you and to do good things for yourself and your family going forward. And so it's an expression of confidence in you by the people in this council, but it's also an expression of the care with which this council, I think, takes all of these issues that come before us. And we don't always grant the appeals. We have denied several, um, in recent memory. Um, but that doesn't mean that we don't care. I mean, that means that we really do look at the individual and the, the, in particular circumstances. And I appreciate, and this is important for other people out there to hear, how honest you were on your application. Because many times we get people who lie on their application and that makes it even more difficult for us up here to consider the whole circumstance. And I also wanna say I appreciate the staff's recommendation and the work that the city attorney and the police department do to get us background information that helps us make our decisions. Because all we're all looking to do is just keep public safety in the right place here in, in Coon Rapids. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item eight is to recommend appointments to the Coon Creek Watershed District Board of Managers. Uh, it's been requested that the city council make recommendations to fill two positions on the Coon Creek Watershed District Board of Managers. Uh, staff advertised the vacancy on the city's website and received four letters of interest. The four candidates, Sean Pejak, Adam Morris, Gary Olson, and Sathia Sar, I apologize if I'm saying that wrong.
Sotia.
Sophie, Sotia Sar. Are Coon Rapids residents interested in serving on this board? The Anoka County Board of Commissioners is the entity responsible for the appointment, but the city makes a recommendation to the county on candidates to consider. Uh, the letter attached to this memorandum provides an explanation of the nomination and appointment process. So with this, we'd be looking to make formal nominations.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Geisler?
I'll make a motion to make the formal nominations to the Coon Creek Watershed District Board of Managers as stated.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Any discussion?
So I would, um, just like to say that I served on the Coon Creek Watershed District for two terms. One was a partial term because I got elected to serve on the city council. I think it's a very important, um, function that the watershed district does here. And in fact, you, people have been watching this evening have probably even heard us reference it with various public works projects and things that we've been working on. I'm really excited that there are four candidates that are being put forward here today. And the reason that I'm excited about it is because there is no representation of Coon Rapids on the Coon Creek Watershed District right now. And the district is big. It's, I think it's over 115 square miles, but it's, it's in Anoka County. It includes parts of Spring Lake Park and Fridley and Coon Rapids and Andover and Blaine and Columbus and Linwood and the entire Carlos Avery place, Ham, Ham Lake, et cetera, um, East Bethel, um, as well. The thing that is particularly, I think, from a representation standpoint concerning to me and that I want to encourage other council members, uh, to do is to reach out to the county board members, as I plan to do as well, and encourage them to nominate somebody from the Coon Rapids or frankly, Coon Rapids if Andover puts up a slate of candidates to, from their area as well. Because we have two members from Blaine, two members from Ham Lake, one member from Spring Lake Park. And frankly, the largest, most significant hydrologic areas in the watershed district, in my humble opinion, and frankly, the biggest tax paying contributor to the watershed district include Coon Rapids and Andover. Um, now, the Carlos Avery part of it is, is big as well. But this is an important thing and we have no representation. So I, I will wholeheartedly agree with, um, the motion and, uh, and would like to see a Coon Rapids representative on that board.
Mr. Mayor? I was gonna say almost the exact same thing.
Plan on doing this much.
Second. No. But, but yeah, yeah, because we have had a Coon Rapids representative, you know, over the years and we've put slates forward in the past and it's, we haven't gotten a Coon Rapids person. And I think it's, it's time that there is someone from Coon Rapids on the watershed district. And I'll be making a couple of phone calls in the next week.
All right. Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And our slate is, um, recommended. And we are on to the open mic, public comment portion of the meeting. If you are here for open mic, provides an opportunity for the public to address the city council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Anybody here for open mic? Perfect. Should you wish to participate in open mic, please approach the podium and state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council. Um, and open mic is not a time for problem solving or reacting to the comments made, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes, you've got three minutes, sir.
Thank you, councilmembers and mayor. Um, I'm here to discuss the proposed access to 610 at East River Road.
Could you provide your name and address?
Oh, sorry about that, sir. My name is Rick Menlich, 9290 Unity Street Northwest. Um, I and other neighbors, uh, found out about this not from the city, but through other sources, um, publications and really each other. Um, so we were all very surprised and disappointed not to hear about this directly. I know if a business is seeking a conditional use permit, everybody within 350 feet is notified by mail or when it's tax time, they come knocking on the door. So we're very disappointed with how the process went. That being said, um, I believe that there is a win-win out of this where the city can get what it's, what it wants with the access without destroying the neighborhood that we live in. There are several houses that are proposed to be demolished as part of this proposal. And I can give you a, a handout once I finish here that you can see and review at your leisure. But, um, if this alternate proposal were accepted, um, again, there would not be the need to destroy that neighborhood, uh, basically northwest of 610 and East River Road. The project would save a lot of money by not doing that portion, yet all the access that's intended would be able to remain in place. So city wins, neighbors win, you maintain your tax base, uh, which is an additional win there for the city. And, uh, none of us would like to move, restart a 30-year mortgage. There's people that are retired there and stuff like that. So, um, and I've been told that there will be an opportunity for open houses and stuff like that. But I also understand at that point, it's going to be pretty much allaying concerns rather than if the state is already on board with the project as proposed, that's pretty much the project that it's gonna be. So this is really the opportunity to try to actually change on a front end and get some alternate proposals that could also be accepted by the state. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So you'll leave those with, uh, the city manager or city clerk over here, I mean?
Okay.
I encourage you to reach out to the county too.
Yeah.
The highway department.
Thank you. Um, anybody else here for open mic? Anybody else here for open mic this evening? With that, we'll close the open mic portion of the meeting. And, uh, hang on, I gotta get back to my, um, there we go. All right. We have the last item on our agenda is an open mic response to Mr. Phil Rosar, uh, up here to open mic. On March 5th, 2019, he'd expressed concerns about Anoka County's proposed reconstruction plans of Foley Boulevard between Coon Rapids Boulevard and East River Road and potential plans on the construction of a full access interchange at trunk highway 610 and East River Road. Um, oh gosh, let's see here. Basically, this just covers what he had to say. And I don't know that I need to really read all of this response, right? Yeah. Let's hear if anybody would like to read it. How's that in the agenda? Um, so yeah, so it was, the last open mic was also somebody with some concerns about that same project. Um, okay. So that's actually the last item on our agenda and we are on to other business. Councilmember Demmer?
All right. This one's coming over to the, uh, the cornerstone over there. Um, so obviously March is, is pothole month with the freeze and thaw cycles and, uh, some are worse than others. The big question I have is if you're a, a resident who sees a pothole, I mean, you know, it's not too hard to find them. Um, what, what's the right thing to do? Do you, do you report it if they're more than six inches deep, but ignore it if it's two inches deep? How should people handle, uh, new potholes that have popped up and How should people handle new potholes that have popped up? And what's the best way to just let you guys know or let you triage whether they're worth fixing?
Councilmember Demmer, I would state that, you know, there's the reported thing on the website, or you can just call the public works line directly. The more information, the better. I mean, if it's in front of a house and address, I mean, if you just mention an intersection, it's difficult to determine that. We do evaluate everyone. And so reporting them is the first step. It shouldn't matter what they are because then we go out and prioritize them based on the location that they're in, where they're located on the roadway. Is that in an area that's going to be reconstructed here in a month? Is it in an area that was just reconstructed? So we take them all and then we go evaluate them and prioritize them based upon that.
Okay. Thank you.
Some of the streets have just blown up. I was driving up Avicet and I said, I said, "Councilmember Kicker, are we redoing Avicet this year?" And he goes, "Nope, that wasn't part of it." It's bad. I mean, and that 112th or 13th, whatever it is that goes in front of Fire Station Three over there beyond Cheapskate, man, that road just blew up.
And it's not going to get better with the freeze and thaw for the next couple of weeks.
Oh, no.
Mayor? When can you start filling some of those bad ones? You can't do it now. It's still freezing and thawing and wet. But is that months away or weeks away?
Well, we have started with hot mix. The plants have opened. So last Friday, as we, I don't want to say finished, but kind of transitioned out of snow and then into water. And now it's into potholes. So last week, we got out our hot box and got that fitted on our equipment and we've been running down and getting hot mix asphalt. So as long as we can get them clean and dry, it's the best thing we can do. This certainly helps. We're on them now.
Would it be safe to say that getting them repaired sooner is better in the long run? You think they deteriorate more as more cars are splashing through and deteriorating and ruining the subsurface?
Sooner you can get the asphalt in them, the better because then it doesn't start to hold more water to do that freeze thaw. But there's a lot of them to get to. Looking at those priorities. However, if you get them down and they're in those high-volume areas, sometimes you can put them in and within an hour with all the volume that you're talking about. So it, it's a challenge, that's for sure.
Mr. Himmer, did anybody report the streetlights on Main Street?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We've put some temp overhead on that. We've got some ground fault issues. And so as things thaw out, we'll be able to run, pull some new wire in the conduit. It's probably been four or five times this summer or this winter that we've been chasing those around. First it was one, then they were flickering, then it was three, and then we got those going and there was another bank. So once it thaws, we'll pull new wire and we'll get them all functional again.
It's really disappointing after all those years with those old dark lights, to finally get the new lights and then have them acting up like that, so. All right. Other business?
Yeah, I'd say my calls are roads, potholes, you know, and just make sure that, you know, we'll get everything and go right to the reported, which is on the website. So let them know where they are and we'll do our best to get them fixed because there's a lot. And there's just an awful lot of where it seems like the top layer is coming off on roads. And so there's a lot of exposed gravel in places, so I think you guys will have your hands full this year.
Aside from potholes, we already had our hands full.
Yes, yes, that's true.
Yeah, a little water. Ms. Bay?
I know, isn't it weird? So I just wanted to make an announcement speaking of having our hands full. We have at least nine different seasonal positions that we're trying to recruit for right now that I wanted to remind people of in the public works department. That's parks, streets, and utilities. And then we also have some very exciting positions in golf and recreation. And so I just wanted to remind everybody of those openings. First round of applications for a lot of them closes on the 29th, so.
And they can find all those on?
On our website, yep.
Very good. So I got a call tonight that's one of those that's really troubles you. It's somebody that's lived in Coon Rapids for 45 years. They've been in the same home for 22 years. And they called and they just said, "What's going on? There's six homes around me, three of them have become rentals in the last year or the last year or two." And it's just, unfortunately, we've got a really good rental licensing program. We keep the homes up, but they don't have the same sense of pride oftentimes. And they're just very concerned about their own house values because all of a sudden, the minimum standard becomes mowing and the shrubs get overgrown and the things aren't cleared out and you know what can, how it can be. And I'm just curious, if there's ever a time we should step back and readdress our rental licensing as far as single-family homes like that? Because her and the neighbor that's been there for even longer are going, is this our time to move out then? And that's the last thing you want is you want, you don't want seasoned residents to be moving out because of rentals moving in around. And it's a tough conversation, but it's one that I think that we should have and just, you know, maybe even we have to put together some sort of little task force or something of which she said she'd love to serve on. So I just, it's something I just, I told her that I would share and I wanted to get it out there. I think the other thing I've got is I'd really love to find out how things are going at Bunker. How's the golf course going?
Mayor?
Thank you for asking. I think tomorrow is one of the most exciting days of the year at Bunker Hills because the practice range is open at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow, which is essentially kicking off the season. Outdoor at Bunker Hills and outdoors at Bunker Hills and hopefully even stay outdoors, right? The forecast looks good. We're also gearing up for Easter already. I know, it's that time of year and we're getting ready. Reservations can be made online or at buckerhillseventcenter.com or by calling. But I think that with the forecast and with everything we're looking at, that before any Easter egg hunts happen, those golfers should be chasing around and hunting their golf balls. Probably two to three weeks from now, we should be open. So it's really, really gearing up, getting exciting, and we're looking forward to a fun day tomorrow, welcoming all those golfers back outside.
Nice, nice. Well, that was good news.
Yeah.
All right. And then the only other thing I noticed was, and I guess we've, we've got one more meeting before this, so I guess I could wait till then. April 11, Bill Concar had to cancel the accordion player for the dessert concert series. And I found out that they hired an old Coon Rapids guy, Dick Zuplinski, to come in and fill in that night.
Maybe you were going to bring up that you know somebody else that plays the accordion.
Are you going to be a guest?
He was, he was, he was my accordion teacher. He was my accordion teacher.
Will there be a guest performance?
So I found out from his son, I ran into him at Home Depot and he goes, "Yeah, you guys called my dad." I went, "What do you mean us guys? What are you talking about?" So. It's April 11 anyway.
I want to know if you're going to have a guest appearance and have solo.
I'm, we're, I haven't talked to him yet.
Oh.
It would require a lot of work between now and then. So that's all I got. That's the concert dessert series. I believe that's the last one this year, too, April 11. Okay. All right. Any other business to come before council? Mr. Stimmel, you had nothing for other businesses.
Everybody was covering it.
All right. We'll be down at the legislature tomorrow.
All day.
All day. Advocating for all things, all things that are necessary, I guess.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Motion by Johnson, second by Kicker to adjourn.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.